The one is a Marine Corps helicopter pilot.
Thank you.
And the other one is a Navy pilot.
The one who was with the Marine Corps, he's out now and he's going to-
Trying to get medical-
Medical, he's in medical-
Call a meeting to order. Try me a moment to sound prayer or reflection. Terry, if you'll call the roll, please.
Pat Rooney.
Here.
Alan Ward.
Here.
Kathy Cox.
Here.
Nicole Cohen.
John Mastin.
Here. Join me in the pledge. I am-
Under the allegiance to a flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with no routine justice for all.
If I can get a motion to review and accept the agenda, please.
I make a motion to review and accept the agenda. Second.
Pat Rooney.
Yes.
Kathy Cox.
Yes.
Alan Ward.
Yes.
John Mastin.
Yes. All right, we're going to review our May 8th board meeting agenda. Superintendent Tiber Sire.
Thank you, yes. In our recognition of visitors, we do have our honoring retirees this year. We've done this at May meeting this year. I did speak with Mr. Mastin about it. One of the things that I would like to do a little bit differently this year to honor our retirees is to actually read a paragraph about each one of them, have them have all of the board members standing and shake their hands, and then have Mr. Mastin present them with their plaque, so that it's a little bit more formal and more consistent. And then have the principals come up as well, so that we have an opportunity for each of them to have similar things said about them, or similar knowledge information shared, and then shake each other's hands. But we did have 16 retirees, I'm hoping that they will all be there. They may not be, but that would be the number that would be present. We will have a reception prior to the board meeting with cake and coffee and so forth for everyone to join the retirees. We also have on the recognition our 2018 Math Olympics champions. And again, these students competed from throughout the region, so they weren't just locally, just local competitors, and Lake Havasu High School did very well. And then we will have our Lake Havasu High School CTE national contenders and winners. Again, there are many of those students. Most of them probably will not attend, so we'll have a fewer number than there are to recognize. And Mrs. Beckler will be there, and she'll have the certificate, so we won't actually be handing certificates. And then we did arrange several months ago for the Lake Havasu High School counselors to do a short presentation, so we do have that scheduled as well. So we anticipate that the recognition of visitors will be a little bit lengthy for the May meeting, which is going up, since that is the last school month of the year. Okay, going through the consent agenda. Our first section, which is 4.1, is the minutes. And we have the minutes of our regular session on April 17th, the work session from April 10th, and then we had special sessions and executive sessions on April 4th, and those minutes are there as well. Get a chance if you have any questions or clarification on the minutes. 4.1.3 is the personnel report. And again, you'll see some of our new hires are on this particular report, and as well as some of our separations. 4.1.4 is our gifts and donations. 4.1.5 is the approval of travel. We do have one travel request, and this is for out-of-state travel for the key club at the high school. They will be traveling to Chicago, Illinois during July. Moving into 5.1, our old business. It was requested and approved by the board to postpone the item to discuss and possibly act to replace Mr. Ward's position. And so that will be open for discussion and possible action at our meeting next week.
I had had a phone conversation with Mr. Ward. Are you still thinking about doing telephonic appearances?
I looked at the letter that I originally submitted, and in it I say I'm going to go through May, and I will continue and be available as I can be to assist the board. I don't think I need to cut another letter, but several people approached me and asked me if I could help out as long as I'm here. And I'm willing to do that. I just want to have everybody understand that there are situations that could develop, and if they do, I might be absent. But I will serve with the board as long as I can to keep a balance on the board, if that's amenable to everybody else.
I think it's kind of at a position where that your choice is to have anyone want to proceed, in my book.
So that would be appropriate discussion and then action for meeting next week. Item 6.1 for new business is the renewal of our Tahoe Food Service contract for 1819. Again, this was a contract that was approved in 2014 with four annual renewals. This is the fourth renewal.
I have a question about that.
Mr. Murray, answer your question.
Pam is also here from the Food Service-
Where is Amy? A very curious person. I noticed that there is a certification regarding lobbying, and it seems to indicate that there is no lobbying. That's pretty unusual, that there is no lobbying. Could you explain that?
It's mandated by the state and the federal government.
To turn in the certificate. But I know AHRIS has paid lobbyists. I mean, your industry, that's not unusual.
All right.
So I'm asking, is this actually true? Or do you have lobbyists? Or is it just that you're looking at it, well, this is just a certificate?
All right.
I want to know what the truth is.
And to be honest, I do not know. I can look into it and answer it during the court.
Well, also, we're still scheduled to have a representative from Tahoe here-
Yes.
-on Tuesday. So this is Tahoe's declaration of that, so that would be a great question that we could ask.
Okay, unfortunately, I will not be able, I'll be here telephonically, and I'm not going to try to ask those kinds of questions, so if you would-
We can find out.
Would do that.
Well, there's lobbying, this is saying financial. That may be the distinguishing. You can certainly, as a company, send someone down to the Capitol and lobby, but putting the money into it beyond, say, a hotel room and that type of thing, I think, is there. I just, if any funds other than federal funds appropriated, or federal appropriated funds have been paid or will be paid to any person for influencing or attempting to influence an officer, employee, or any agency member of Congress. I just, I don't see where there's the, where they could sign that.
Well, that's fine if there is no lobbying regarding anything on here. I just can't tell, there's nothing checked off, they're just a signature.
You can't use the federal government's money to lobby the federal government, is what it's saying. You can use anybody else's money, just not theirs.
Okay.
I do understand from Mrs. Cox's, there is, nothing's been completed to say either yes, we're lobbying, or no, we're not. There's a-
I don't know that that's a necessary component to this, because it's a certification that they're going to comply with the federal rules on this.
Well, I'd like to hear them say that.
And that they'll pay the super penalty for each failure. That's what they're stipulating.
I'd still like to hear-
We'll reach out to them this week, so they're prepared to answer that question on Tuesday.
I'm sure you're here on Tuesday, though, so-
But you're telephonically, all right.
But I don't think it's ever very clear to the audience. It's difficult if you just ask the question.
We can get their response in writing.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, item 6.2 is a request to increase the school meal prices. We are actually requesting an increase of five cents for lunch prices and no increase for breakfast for the 1819 school year. Item 6.3 is the approval of the Thunderbolt Handbook. I know that that was sent to you electronically. We did not print out the handbook for you. We do have a summary of the revisions to the handbook. I do want to share on the handbooks, I just printed it out, that from the work of the discipline committee, on page 30 of the handbook, at the front is the statement, that the discipline committee philosophy statement. And then we've also included the J-K-E-D policy of the board, which explains that every violation of the actual discipline is determined by the factors, including the age of the student, the frequency of the type, the magnitude of behaviors, et cetera. So it is individualized, there's not a standardized consequence. And then in the Thunderbolt Handbook, the reflection is a maximum consequence, and there are additional steps that are listed this year.
I actually really like the idea that we put the maximum in there and give ourselves some ability for some context and some meaning.
Item 6.4 is the approval for the Lake Havasu High School handbook. And again, in the discipline section, we did add, delete the statement. And what you'll notice in the policy this time is an actual chart that provides, again, the minimum, the mid, and the maximum consequence, which is different from the past.
On page 37, in acceptable dress part, it says pants may not have holes above fingertip length. For some reason, Mr. Beckler, we didn't go all the way with pants and holes, we just want the fingertips. What was the reason?
To match the shorts policy.
So if I had no means in my pants, that would be okay?
Yes.
I just wonder if schools are a training ground for when kids get out of school. In other words, that's one of the justifications, not just academically, but kids are expected to go to school without the entparty and all that, because we recognize that attendance in school is good for academics. But at the same time, there's a carryover here, in that when you get out in the workforce, when you go to work and you pick and choose when you're going to go to work or not go to work, you're not going to keep a job. And appearance is the same thing. And so I wonder why, and it's bothered me, because this is not a new thing. This happened back, I think, in the 80s or 90s.
Yeah.
And only in America would you buy clothes that are basically rags. This has mystified me, because when I was growing up, it was, and, you know, I mean, maybe I'm a dinosaur, but you would patch holes, and usually those type of pants were used if you were working in laboring capacity. They're going to get torn up, they're going to look like that, and whatever. But you didn't wear them to school, you didn't wear, so I just am mystified why we don't have that expectation for kids. And it's no different than behavior, like language or anything else, because the schools are that training ground for eventually, when the kid gets out of school, that they're going to be successful. But it doesn't seem like that's, we have a dress code from the neck down to the abdominal area, but we have no dress code from the waist on down to the ankles. And that just, why can't we have an expectation that you come to school like it's a place for work? Like it's a, that you don't come there in rags. And I've seen it, and it's not just a problem here. But years ago, when I was the assistant principal, and we dealt with this, I asked a girl, I said, she worked down at the Valley National Bank downtown, and I said, would they allow you to wear that to work? Oh, no, Mr. Rooney, we have to dress a certain way. And it's probably no different than at McDonald's or other places, that you show up ready for work.
Then you need to implement a uniform. I mean, a kid's going to wear, I mean, a kid's got to be able to express themselves. I get the standardized shirts, but at what point are we going to stop telling kids what to do, how to act? They have to learn themselves how to be who they're going to be. And I agree with the short, I mean, obviously, there's appropriate dress, but I don't think that we should, unless you're going to go to full uniforms, dictate what they should wear.
Years ago, when I came back from Vietnam and started teaching the kids-
But this isn't years ago anymore.
Wait, just wait a second. The kids had this long hair, it was culture shock to me.
Mm-hmm.
And this is who I am. And I talked to a parent, and he kept that picture, and as the guy grew older, he had it in his house. The guy's kids would come, by that time, his son's kids would come and see his dad's picture. And he told his dad, why don't you get that picture down? He says, "Son, remember, this is who you are." In other words, I don't buy the idea that these little things like this define your individualism. What I'm saying is, you know, it's an environment where you're trying to develop standards that are going to carry over into the workforce, or whatever you're going to do. And, but we don't seem to be able to accomplish what, to me, is a minor thing, and I just, I don't understand. I sort of enjoy this discussion, because I just had it with my freshman in college. I had a presentation, and a guy got up to give a presentation in raggedy blue jeans, flip-flops, and a tank top. And he couldn't understand why that wasn't appropriate, to give a college presentation dressed like that. And I had to sit and explain to him, if I was running McDonald's, and you came to get a job application, I wouldn't say a word to you. You'd just never get called back for an interview. Be that simple. And whether we have these as rules or not, I think we all have to understand that we have an obligation to these kids to make sure they understand what's expected of them in public. And trust me, they don't. Because I see the freshmen, I see what they're getting, and I'm telling you, they don't.
At what point does parents need to start parenting? Because I think that's my job, to tell my children and teach my kids how to be appropriate in public, and how to dress appropriately. I don't think it's my school's job, or my job as a teacher. That's my job as a parent, to decide what they wear and how they should dress and present themselves.
Can I answer that?
Yeah.
I went to school, Pat Rooney was the assistant principal. If I would have worn what I saw at the high school, when I had the opportunity to substitute teach there on Friday, I would have been in his office, early and often. I had parents that wouldn't let me out the door that way, but there were kids that got out the door that way, and they were dealt with by the school system for violating the school dress code. It's not a new issue. It's a very old issue. If we have to lower our expectations to comply with what the kids are doing, as opposed to having the kids come to our expectations, it's no different than saying, that's okay, you don't have to learn math or English today, because you can't get it today. It's our job to have these children come to us and have a certain series of expectations for them, whether they be academic, or social, or in this case, dress. That's all part of it.
Right, and I'm not disagreeing. You know, I don't disagree with the tank tops, or the chest hanging out, or the shorts, where your booties hanging out. Those are inappropriate for anyone in my world to be wearing, let alone a student in a school. But beyond that, I don't believe it should be our duty to determine what kind of blue jeans that they chose to wear to school.
We're not asking what type of blue jeans they wear, we're asking for complete blue jeans. I think that-
But so you're asking them to wear a specific type of blue? You want blue jeans without any-
Complete.
-holes in them? But that's a style right now. We, I mean, at some point, you have to understand that a kid has to experience their world. When are they going to get to express themselves in their dress? We have standardized shirts, and like I said, I get those, and I understand that. But unless you're going to go to a full uniform, where you're going to give them a shirt and pants to wear, then I don't think that we should be dictating whether their jeans have holes in them.
Nisa has had her hand up patiently.
Okay, well, I would agree that the issue comes down to, if we're going to dictate what's on the bottom, let's please dictate what's on the bottom. If it's going to be dictated, I would prefer to just have standardized head-to-toe and just be done with it, because the enforcing is an issue. Because then we get down to what counts as a hole. If it's got the wear-
These kids are paying $75 to $100 for these jeans that have wear, it's not like
a complete hole, but sometimes then the strings break, and then you do see skin through them. What's a hole? Also, then unfortunately, on the opposite side of the spectrum, the kids that are not spending $90 on these jeans, the kids that are spending whatever, or getting them from Goodwill or whatever, and they've got holes in them, because they've legitimately tore their jeans, and they don't necessarily have more than one pair. So there's, it just puts teachers in another pole. Can I make a judgment call again, please? You know, can I be in charge of deciding why it is or how it is, that this is the other? So I understand that, you know, if we said no holes, it's theoretically okay, but I would just, I would say that if we're going to make a move to specify no holes, I would prefer that you just say, here's the bottoms, pick A, B, or C, and hopefully they're cheap, and then you don't have to fight with your kid about anything.
Can I, and I don't mean to be facetious here, but are teachers today not willing to do what teachers 30 years ago did with the same issue?
No, but like, we truly are. What's a hole? Is that a hole because it's frayed? Is that a hole because it's lost skin? Where is that hole? Is it below fingertips? This is the conversations we've been having this spring. Because we've been having the hole, no, that's got holes, and it's below your fingertips. Although leggings and leggings haven't been ruled out, but the leggings have sheer up the sides, and if they lift up their shirt, there's sheer all the way to the waist on the sides, and we're seeing underwear through sheer on the sides of things. This is the real world that's out there right now, and these are the things that we're dress coding kids on. And so I'm thinking that if we're having a conversation, that we're having to specify more specifications for the bottom half, can't we just be done? And specify.
But these were the specifications that existed until a couple of years ago?
Well, I'm just saying, if we're going to have this debate about whether or not we are going to say full jeans versus, how come we just didn't say jeans without holes versus holes must be below fingertip? I would prefer if we're going to go part ways, just to do it.
Do the whole thing.
And some of this came out of, it's not just jeans, it's skirts, it's other kinds of clothing that has holes in them, so it's-
Go ahead.
Yeah.
I just wanted to add that I was a 90s kid, and I had pants with holes in them, because I couldn't afford pants that didn't have holes in them. And I teach kids every day with standardized shirts with holes in them, in the armpits especially, because that's where the shirts disintegrate first. I have kids with pants with holes in their crotch, because that's where the pants disintegrate first. And I didn't do it because it was cool, but I was really grateful that it was cool, because I didn't get pointed out for being different than everybody else. And my teachers did have to deal with it, and I'm willing to deal with it, but I'm not willing to look a kid in the face that I know doesn't have anything at home and tell him, he's got to go buy some new pants before I can teach him English. That's not fair. So if you're going to start with the no holes, then tell me exactly what those holes look like, tell me what the brand is, because I'm not going to go up to a poor kid and tell them to go to the principal's office, because they're poor.
I would like to say something. Having been, being very experienced with changing dress code, because I was the principal who brought the standardized shirt to the high school, and it was extremely controversial. And I think the place that, when you want to change student dress at this level, is you need to bring parents in at all of the schools. If this cannot be resolved at a school board meeting, if this is something the board has some direction in, or the superintendent, then it needs to start with parents at each school, and have a discussion, and bring them along. And that's how we did it at the high school. Our side council had been working on this for a couple of years before I ever got to the high school, and laid the way for me to proceed with that. And I can tell you, at the school board meeting where that was decided on, I was told by the superintendent at that time, that it was not going to pass. And, but I brought it anyway on the agenda, he let me put it on the agenda. And the meeting was extremely controversial, and because a mother brought her daughter in and said, look at her beautiful, look at her beautiful body, who would want to hide this, my daughter's beautiful body? And then it was just like, manna from heaven. I couldn't believe it, and the board went, what? And it passed. And so I'm telling you, this is not something you want the four of us to be up here, or five of us to be deciding tonight, or next Tuesday, score in the meeting.
I think what worries me is not whether they've got holes in their pants. I mean, I think the principals can determine what's appropriate. But what bothers me is that I'm looking at people coming out of high school, coming in college, and they still haven't learned to dress in public. You know, I mean, grade school kids are grade school kids, middle school kids are middle school kids, and high school kids have to start being prepared for life. And they should be graduating with a pretty basic sense of how to dress in public. And I'll be honest with you, a lot of them have no concept.
But who gets to decide what's appropriate in public? You, me?
You do.
I decide for myself. I'm the one who's deciding what's appropriate for me to wear. I don't want someone telling me as an adult what to wear, which is why I think our staff dress code says professional, and we all know the definition of a professional dress. We're not told specifically that we have to wear pantyhose, or sandals, or certain shoes, because we as adults know how we're supposed to dress. I don't think anyone has the right to dictate what someone is appropriately dressed as.
I think in a school, it depends on what you're asking of the student. Like I just said a minute ago, when I ask a student to give a presentation, I should be able to expect them to dress professionally, and if they don't, I have an obligation to correct them.
And I, as a student, would hope that my syllabus states that if you're giving a presentation, this is the expectation of your dress.
Professional.
Correct. I mean, at what, I mean, you're asking five- and six-year-olds to learn how to dress professional?
No, I'm asking seniors and juniors in high school. What I just said a minute ago-
But they're going to school, I mean, I guess-
There's a difference between a grade school child and a high school child.
But I think we're making school too serious. School needs to be a place where kids want, please do not roll your eyes at me, I don't let students do that, I expect an adult not to. Students need to want to come to school, and they want to want to learn in that classroom. And we as teachers are trying to make those classrooms as comfortable as possible to get those kids there. I think we have a bigger problem with our attendance rate than we do with a dress code. I think our kids coming to school is worse than what they're wearing to school. And I'll say as a parent, not even as a teacher, I don't believe that you, as a board, have a right to dictate what type of clothing- as a board have a right to dictate what type of clothing I dress my child in unless you set a uniform for school.
Superintendent Masire, do we have a problem with our attendance rate?
Not that I'm aware of. We're running in the nineties at all of our schools.
I simply believe that as individual teachers and individual administrators, we have an obligation to expect a higher standard from our high school children than we do for my grade school children. And whether it's written or not, we have an obligation to inform the students of what's proper and what's improper.
I can, I can tell you this. I have students at the high school that are both boys, and I have a student at, at an elementary school that's in fourth grade. My student at the elementary school is still on his knees at times, crawling around and doing what he, what he shouldn't be doing at his age. My wife goes absolutely nuts when she sees the holes in his pants, but that's age appropriate. My older boys don't go to school with rips in their, in their pants. And, and the reason why they don't go to school with rips in their pants is because they're older, they're more mature, and we have a higher expectation for them as a family. So I think Mr. Ward is absolutely correct. We, we should be looking at different levels of student in a different manner as far as as what that dress looks like on the bottoms. Anything further from the audience?
Scott, do you guys have courses that have? Like, I know when I was at the high school, we had VICA. So now it's not VICA, but it's Skills. Right. I know in those coursework, it is a conversation about dress code. In fact, for presentations, it is. But that's the path that a student has chosen. Nice, nice and myself, he chose to go into Skills. He had to get a shirt, a tie, pants, black shoes in order to participate. It was directed, but, but I don't know if, I mean, does every student take those courses? No. I mean...
Similar, similar things happen when our kids travel to the leadership conferences that continually come in front of the board to travel out of state. Example being the one that's on your, in your board package to go to Chicago. It's a leadership conference. I know this because my daughter's in it as well. She's expected to have this, this, and this. Tell you that it's embarrassing as a parent going back two weeks, and it's her poor planning that she did not share with us that she needed this, this, and this until the night before. And she was too busy working and this and that, but she had to borrow clothes from a friend to make sure that she had the right attire as well. So it is learned on our campus. Does it reach every single student? No. But neither does AP Calculus, neither does Chemistry. There are a lot of things that happen on our campus that do not reach every student, but it reaches a majority of our students. My two cents on, on the dress code, if the high school would have went off on their own and came up with the shorts policy, it would have failed miserably. And that's my belief. My belief, the, the success rate that that had was because it was decided as a school board and as a district, and it was implemented as a district, not as the high school, not Mary Jo trying to battle this on her own at the middle school. So to me, if we're going to go the route of addressing holes in jeans, that needs to be addressed by the district and the school board, and not a single school for it to be successful. Otherwise, you're going to pay, and the taxpayers are going to pay, for administrators to deal with holes in jeans every single day for an entire school year.
Okay. Anything further from the audience, from the board? Let's move forward.
Item 6.5 is our 2017-18 revised budget. I know Mr. Murray will be doing a presentation at the regular board meeting and has provided some backup documentation for the board if you'd like to ask any questions at this point.
Well, that's the natural one. With everything going on at the legislature right now, how does that put a monkey wrench into all of this?
It doesn't affect the revision, but we're, as soon as this gets approved next week, we'll be fully going a hundred miles an hour with the adoption process for the proposal process and with the adoption for next year, so more to come on that one. This, this one is, this one's okay because like I said, it's just a revision for 1718.
Any questions?
Your handouts that you have as well, the colored copies, they're also part of the PowerPoint next week, so when I present that, I'll walk you through each of those pages that you see. The other packet is simply the expenditure budget that will, documentation that will end up being uploaded to the department.
Item 6.6, this is a request from ASBA to discuss the governing board's priorities for legislative action by ASBA. There is backup documentation in this item from ASBA, and we also have included for the board's information, the last time that the board identified priorities was in 2013, and so we've included for the board's information in the letter that was sent at that time. So at that, at that time, it'll be appropriate to have a discussion and take the action going on on legislative priorities. Item 6.7 is a recommendation to approve an agreement with Rachel's Challenge and approve Rachel's Challenge as the sole source. This item comes from the activity of the Citizens for Husbands and Schools Committee and was based on the response of the community after we had a student suicide this fall. And so with a subcommittee of the citizens, they formed and discussed some options for the community and are proposing a community event, which I will have several slides to present on what this actually entails at the meeting. Initially, the district is paying for a portion of that, and then the intent is for the community to raise funds for that as well. We have received, or will be shortly receiving, I'm aware of at least a $10,000 donation to help support this. And so those funds will go back to reimburse the maintenance operation budget for what is spent on French.
I have a problem. I don't believe in program management. And I have a real problem when something occurs that's monumental and we suddenly decide we have to leap into a program because we have to resolve the issue forever. And I'm going to want a really good presentation on this because in my opinion is, we have a lot of very fine adults teaching our students. And if they're interacting with our students on a daily basis, you're not going to stop every monumental tragedy. But if they're truly communicating with their students, you'll accomplish just as much as you will with a program that makes you feel good and you check off a box. Oh, we did it, right? I mean, I'll listen, but I'm just saying, I have a real problem with it.
And I think that we will have some folks that are from the Citizens Committee here as well to answer questions about why they are recommending this particular program.
I think, I think all too often, we do something like this and say, "We've done our job." And I think it's much more important that, that we encourage our teachers to communicate with the students on a regular basis. The nurse in my high school used to say she could never understand why I knew all the girls were pregnant before she, she did, was because they came to me and they said, "Mr. Ward, I got a problem. Mr. Ward, can you give me some advice?" And I'm not sure a program like this would have done me a whole lot of good.
I, I don't necessarily disagree with you on the surface. I, I think the world has changed quite a bit. When I see some of the issues that come forward, especially when you hit into the middle and high school levels, a lot of this is happening in school between classes on cellular telephones. And, and you'll see a lot of the bullying, and you'll see a lot of the, a lot of the stamping down of, of other students being done through social media, whether it be Snapchat or Facebook Messenger or, or so on. I've seen this happen in my own family where I've had one of my sons involved in a, in a push and, push and shove, back and forth verbal altercation with someone over a typed message on Facebook Messenger. I think what we've done as a society is, it used to be when you were bullied, two or three people saw what happened, and, okay, two or three people saw and you got embarrassed, and it wasn't so bad. Nowadays, what happens is everybody gets tagged into a Facebook Messenger thread, and the next thing you know, the entire school sees it. And, and so I, I think when we start talking about, about some of the things that would be addressed through Rachel's Challenge, I think that, I, I think that we have to start thinking a little differently, taking a little different tack, and it may not be something necessarily that, that the administration or a teacher gets exposed to by the way it's done as much as it used to be.
I just worry, I already do, John, I worry that in too many cases, especially in, pardon me, I don't want to embarrass anybody or get anybody upset, especially with young teachers, it becomes easy to say, "That's been covered by Rachel's Challenge." I don't have to openly and personally address that problem. And, you know, I'm just saying, we have a balance here. And I'm not saying I'll vote against this. I will have to hear what they have to say. But it's very easy to establish programs instead of doing our job. That's all I'm saying.
And again, I don't disagree with what you said at the, at the surface level. I very much agree with that. I see it as something that augments as opposed to something that replaces.
I'm Amy Barney. I'm a teacher at the high school, and what I would hope to see out of it is, it's a program that gives teachers more tools to help in those situations.
Yes?
I just want to say, as someone who did Rachel's Challenge as a student, that it's super powerful. They brought it to my high school. I grew up in the Columbia area, so it's a pretty big deal. And, and it was, it was really powerful, and probably like 10% of the reason why I'm a teacher today. So it's not going to replace teachers, but it's worth listening to their presentation.
And for, just a little bit more background on, it's called a program, essentially it's, it's very impactful for students, but it's, it's essentially, it's every student and every adult hearing the same message within a context of kindness and bullying, and not necessarily, the, the suicide triggered the conversation, but that's not the intent necessarily of Rachel's Challenge. And then it's very specific training for every 10th grader in the district to have an ongoing process where they as students are members of a club that, and there's already an anti-bullying club that would probably take on, but it's the Friends of Rachel's Club, and then they are specifically trained on how to interact and how to recognize and how to intervene with other students as a result. So it's, it's more than just a, a one...
Well, I'm sure they'll, they'll provide all that for us.
Your name, please?
I'm Fina Koda, Smoke Tree. So I teach kindergarten at Smoke Tree and always had over 30 kids in my classroom since I started here back in 2012. And I have to say that I've had 26 kids now, and I have gotten to know each one of them so much better because of that lower class size. So if you really want us to do our job and reach these kids' hearts, it's going to be forcing, you know, those lower class sizes. And I know that's not something we can do, I guess, in this room, but I think that is the most important piece. And pushing kindness, I'm assuming that's what Rachel's Challenge is, kindness, anti-bullying, is a more important issue than holes in the jeans. Okay?
Okay. Item 6.8, this is a request to add a extracurricular, co-curricular tax credit club for Starline Elementary School. The purpose would be for our after-school tutoring program. This is our first one coming forward and our new forms and with the backup documentation for the board. I know Ms. Triasi is here if you wanted to ask any questions.
It's either really good or really bad.
I don't think anybody here is supposed to after-school tutoring.
No, I don't think so.
I think we did find that the process made it all much smoother though, having a process, having a set... So that was good. Item 6.9 is our bachelor's student activity funds, auxiliary funds. Any questions? We do have, it is at your place, an additional item to add to the agenda, which is 610. And this item is a request for the board to review and approve on first reading our revisions to our ACA and ACAAR, which is our sexual harassment policy and the regulation that goes with that. You may recall that we had an OCR complaint back in January, discussed that with the board. And while the actual complaint was not substantiated, when they looked at our policy, they found that it was not compliant. And so our attorney has been working to revise this. However, we did have a timeline for that. And so in order to notify that the policy has been revised and share with our staff the revisions in the policy, we need to be able to do that before all of our staff leave, et cetera. So we're asking that it be approved at the May meeting as opposed to the June meeting so that we can have fun with that. So that has been added in, I believe, at secretary's desk.
And this is something where what we're doing here is actually going to ASBA because ASBA's policy was not compliant?
That is correct. So that would be part of the policy revisions. Now, the, the content of the policy is not completely, is not completely different, but because the format was so different and structured, we went ahead and removed the old policy and substituted the new policy. And in our informational items, we do have a report from the Educational Services Department and the Special Education Department. And this, all that we have on the agenda for this text plan.
All right.
I'm sorry, I do have one other thing.
Okay.
At your table, the, there is some information about educator of the year from the chamber. You'll notice that there's a, a printout of the invitation. There's some backup information that I shared with the board a long time ago, meaning December probably, that, please ignore the formatting, I just included it just in case you wanted to see it again. But as a part of Division 2020 Pillar 2, the funding that was left over from the America's Best Cities Competition, one of the, the decisions of the... Best Cities Competition, one of the, the decisions of the Education Committee was to start a district-wide recognition program in conjunction with Division 2020 Committee. And so the district had posted on our webpage and solicited nominations from the public, from parents, from teachers, from principals, for three different awards. It would be the Teacher of the Year for each school site, and Rookie of the Year, which would be a teacher who had from one to three years of experience, and then a Support Person of the Year, which would be a staff member district-wide who is not a certified teacher. And so we have had a committee process. We've selected the Rookie of the Year and the Support Person of the Year. And each site has selected a Teacher of the Year. And from those site Teachers of the Year, there will be a District Teacher of the Year selected that will be announced at this event at the chamber. And that person will be our nominee for the Arizona Rural School Teacher of the Year. So that we have a process for that. And that information of who the site Teachers of the Year, et cetera, should come out, I'm hoping by tomorrow. But the event is the Chamber of Commerce Normal After Hours Mixer. It is from 5:00 to 7:00 on May 17th at the Nautical Inn Pavilion. And the cost for members is $5 to attend, and the district is a member.
Please, everybody from the district out there, attend for $5.
And the board will be, is invited complimentary to attend as well, as was each of the honorees, one guest, and the principal.
Any further announcements, updates? Well, our next meeting will be May 8, 6 o'clock, right here. It'll be our regular board meeting, where we'll vote on everything we just went over, maybe discuss it a little bit more in depth. And with that, I will take the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Make the motion to adjourn. Always one.
Second.
Ellen Ward?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
John Housman?
Yes, we stand adjourned.